Good.
Good.
Okay, we speak. Okay. Yeah. Do you have first? Do you have first? Well. Yes.
Good to go?
Yes.
Okay, it's a little after seven o'clock. The Town of Chester Planning Board is now in session. Just a couple of quick updates. Dave Donovan is not, will be here shortly, okay? He's not on our first project tonight. Ashley Torrey, who represents when Dave can't sit in because there's a conflict, will be on our WebEx link and she may be making some comments from home. She couldn't come tonight, so ask her to just join us on the WebEx. So, our planner Kristen's with us tonight. She'll be making comments on Baroda and Davidson Drive. Rich, is Rich here or not yet? I don't see Rich here, I don't think. So, traffic consultant for Davidson Drive will also be here tonight when Davidson Drive is later on tonight, so. All right, so first thing on our agenda tonight, Mr. Getz, you want to come on up? Is the Palmer Family and Orange County Land Trust subdivision, the minor subdivision? We're. We don't use paper here. No paper.
Okay.
No paper. All right, hang on just a second. Dave, I guess bring up the subdivision, man?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Rich, how you doing? Traffic consultant, answer right. For sure.
Okay, thank you. I'm Dave Getz from the Engineering Properties. We live in engineering for this proposed subdivision. We have Kyle Sandusky with us tonight from the Orange County Land Trust Conservation Director. He knows a lot of backgrounds. Kyle Sandusky's here and he can fill us in on any questions you have regarding the background, the future disposition of the open space, that type of thing. But just in, for a brief summary, the land trust is in negotiations or under contract with the Palmer family to purchase large tracts of land with the purpose of providing open space. Kyle can fill us in on that, on that process. We're before you to create a subdivision to separate off the area around the existing house that's on one side of Leroux Road, on the western side. And as part of the process, we are creating a new buildable lot on the east side across Leroux Road. So, those lots are shown in white as lots one and two. The green areas are part of the same parcel, part of the same lot today, but again, we're trying to separate those two residential properties off. The green space will, the plan is for it to become New York State Parkland as part of a project that Kyle can discuss.
Thank you, Dave. I'll be real brief. So, we intend to work with the Palisades State Park Commission as well as New York State Parks to add the summit of Sugarloaf Mountain as well as the, as shown in green here, an additional about 303 acres to Goose Pond Mountain State Park, ultimately connecting a trail from the hamlet of Sugarloaf into the summit and then on to, you know, Goose Pond Mountain as well as the Highlands Trail. You know, the reason why we are doing this subdivision is the state has no interest in holding any kind of residential structures or the dam that exists on the northern side of Lot Number Two here. And in order to facilitate the transfer to the state, we need to, you know, get rid of these structures. That is the reason for the subdivision.
We appeared before you a couple of months ago and since that time, we resubmitted plans with additional details. We did soil testing on the site for the two buildable lots. Those were witnessed by Mr. Fusco's office and so we're here to answer any questions you might have and to request that we be set for a public hearing in the future.
Okay. Al, you, any comments or questions?
I just, to repeat, you know, we did do the soil test. They are waiting or currently part of health review.
DPW. No, not health, but.
I meant, I'm part of the public.
Yes, no, we haven't gotten a response.
And then our total erosion control ground possibly.
Okay.
Just word comments.
Dave, also, you and I talked, you were gonna put like a small parking lot.
Yes, if you.
We talked about.
If you go down to one of the further sheets, probably sheet four, I believe. Yeah, near the top of that sheet. Let's see.
It's gotta be right here over here. If you got a pen, you should have a pen.
Oh, yes.
I think this is where you were telling me.
Yes.
Right there and I think I see them right.
That's right. There's an existing paved road. It's a town road, old Leroux Road that dead ends right at the intersection with the road, Restfield Road there. And we show four parking spaces that could be really just striped out on existing pavement, no construction needed. And those could be used as parking for public, for hikers, others that might want to enter the property.
Correct. And I would add that the trail that we are currently planning that would connect the summit of Sugarloaf Mountain into Goose Pond Mountain and the surrounding area would exist in that rough area. So, it would be phenomenal to have a public access point at that spot, at old, dead end of Old Leroux Road.
I thought it was a good idea because I felt that people coming from Sugarloaf will have the access from the bypass in there, but otherwise people had to hike from some serious hiking just to get over to the farm, yet I wanted to get up on top of Sugarloaf Mountain. So, this is gonna solve that problem, which is a great idea.
Correct.
It's a good deal, so. Hey, let me go down to the board. Larry?
Everything's good. They've done what we've asked them to do last time, so I'm good with it.
Okay. Todd?
I'm good with that.
Jackie?
Mark? This proposed Lot Two, is that for sure? Because last time we were talking about potentially leaving that as open space as well, is this for sure going to be another? I know it's gonna be a buildable lot, but are you guys planning on building it at this moment?
Sure, so I can answer that. So, we do not intend to have this as a buildable lot. We're hoping to avoid that. However, you know, we are in discussions with multiple private buyers and it's really hard to comment on, you know, ultimately what's going to take place. So, you know, again, our intention as, you know, as a nonprofit land trust is to see this, you know, continue as a public access point. And we're hoping to, you know, continue to discuss with the Town of Chester as a potential, you know, purchase for a public park as well as, you know, other, other potential buyers as well.
So, this lot is now going to be the Orange County Land Trust lot?
So, no, we are intending to sell it to a private buyer.
Right.
In the future, yeah.
So, okay, that clears it up. Thank you.
Just one quick comment to Mark on this was that, you can correct me, but we talked about in the last meeting, there's a dam over there and the state of New York doesn't want, doesn't want to own that dam.
Correct.
And that pond, that area through there. So, they don't want a part of that in there. So, they have to create something, they gotta sell that off or whatever because the state's not, doesn't want, has any, no interest whatsoever putting that into Goose Pond area, so. All right. John?
I'm good.
Justin?
I'm good as well.
Someone want to make a motion to set this for a public hearing on April the 5th? Melissa, okay? Motion by Larry. Second by somebody?
I got it.
All in favor? All right, so we'll set you for seven o'clock as soon as they, thereafter, we can hear it and stuff like that, so. And again, I gave you a round of applause last time and we thank the land trust for taking their lead on this. It's an important thing and really a great thing for the Town of Chester and for everybody, for hikers and everybody. I think this is just really wonderful move, so. So, thanks. Okay? Thanks, Dave. All right. All right, next thing on our agenda is AT&amp;T. Marty, is it Marty?
Yeah.
I saw you last night.
How are you?
Up on that water tank?
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, my name is Marty McGee. I'm from Aerosmith Development out of Saratoga Springs. I'm here representing new singular wireless PCS, commonly known as AT&amp;T. And I'm here before you tonight for a proposed co-location slash eligible facilities request on the tower on Papa Drive, the ARX Wireless Tower, which was recently approved. But I can go into what we're proposing, but I know you have the plans and the RF reports and the FCC compliance reports.
So, I can just run this by the board, but quickly here, if you remember what we did out on the co-location up on the Kings Estates and that, I'm not sure we, we need you to do that tonight, okay? Similar to what you did up on the Kings Estates. You know, I'm sure you've done your, everything you had to do and stuff like that.
Right, and it's an eligible facilities request.
But you become an eligible facility under federal, I think it's 6409 or something.
That's the number.
Right, which says that you have a right to co-locate on, and then planning board unless there's some kind of special circumstances, really can't refuse anyway. So, I don't know if we really need to go through all of that. If you remember, we did this on Kings Estates up there, we just waved E-Mogul and AT&amp;T on there and right in, and sent them right over to the building inspector. So, I know, Al, you had one comment, which was about making sure that the structure itself, which would be the pole, the ARX pole, and I think you answered that today?
Yes, I did. I received an email today, you're potentially listed from local state.
Yes.
And I reviewed it originally and I thought it was satisfactory.
So, again, this is a co-location of wireless antennas up on an existing pole, hasn't been built yet, but it's gonna be built very shortly. It's in the process of being built on Papa Drive, which is up in the Walton Lake Estates area up on there and that. So, they do have a right under federal law to co-locate. The town's code itself encourages co-location, so we don't have to build another pole and another tower somewhere else. So, that's what he's asking to do. So, so if the board's purview would be to make a motion to send this directly to the building inspector for building permits and then send them on their merry way, so. Somebody want to make that motion? Motion by Todd, second by Jackie. All in favor? All right. All right, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reddick.
Lex is in the back here.
Yes, I'm gonna speak to her then. Thank you, Melissa, for all your help too.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I told you, some of this is gonna go easy tonight, so. All right, next thing on our agenda is FPS Apparel at 133 L.K. Drive. Amador, you're here?
Good evening, Amador Laput, Felonzer Engineering. Here representing Jay Feinberg, who's FPS Apparel. So, Jay has been in this location three years. He does custom apparel and he also rents storage across the street of about 5,000 square feet for a warehouse for the incoming raw materials and the outgoing finished materials. So, he's proposing to build on to the back of the building about 5,000 square feet and if approved, he would then transfer the warehouse across the street into this warehouse. So, we're not proposing any new employees or no increase in water usage. It's just for storage. And this is a workshop, so I hadn't prepared the full package yet, but in subsequent drawings would have the Erosion and Sediment Control Plan, Grading Plan, and construction details.
So, Al, you had some comments. I have some comments too, but Al, you had comments.
I did. It was just a minor substance, just a very preliminary, so I understood that. Just to remind everybody, you needed, you needed just a little tax benefit information you need to correct from Edward.
Yes. Yeah.
Erosion and Sediment Control Plan, Parking Account, Services, Provisions, you can, for the board.
Yeah, so we agreed to provide all of those.
So, when I looked at this last week, when it first came in, it appeared that the well was gonna be inside the new addition?
So, it hasn't been decided if it's gonna be there or if we're gonna build around it.
Al?
So, yeah, we.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, am I wrong that you can't have a well inside of a building?
Yeah, sure.
So.
They could protect it, you can't build around it.
Yeah.
There are alternatives. They're gonna have to come back and something.
Where is the septic system on here? Is that in the back?
It's, yeah, it's in the front.
So, nothing's gonna affect that at all?
No.
So, all right, so you have to, I mean, the plans have to be updated so we get to see that, you know?
Sure.
I took a ride up there. It seems like you have successful business, got a lot of cars parked there, so.
Absolutely.
It's just a good thing, I'm not knocking that. I mean, I'm just saying, you're on an industrial park, it's a good thing and you're doing, seem to be doing well. It doesn't seem though that you have enough parking identified here. You had cars on the side when I took a ride up there. I don't know if any other board members had a chance to take a ride up there. Larry's saying you should have said. You were parked over here, but you were also parked in the back and that. So, I, I think you have to identify, how much true parking do you need and is this enough parking? Because based on what I saw that day, unless you had an overflow or for some reason, but you had quite a few cars parked there, so I think you have to identify, give us some true parking counts.
True.
We're not asking, you know, for you to, you know, pave the whole damn thing. We don't want that to happen, you know? We'd rather, you have a nice backyard in the back, down in the backyard and stuff like that, but I think you have to give us some honest counts on parking, how many employees you have and so on and so forth, so. All right. Justin, we'll start with you.
No comment at this time.
Charlie, so.
Yeah.
John?
Mark? The warehouse, the crossway that you're currently using, you don't own that, you're just renting, leasing it, and so this is just gonna be for your, your personal use? Or for business use?
We're planning on moving whatever is in across the street into here, not rent.
Not rent at all? All right. Just wondering if you're expanding exponentially here. Yeah, just to echo what Don will say in the parking spots, but.
Jackie?
And just in the back, I mean, update the plans because of the rise there. I don't know if a wall is gonna be warranted from the back coming forward where it is, but I mean, we can't see any of it until all of the, I mean, I was there, it was kinda tight and it's tight coming around the right-hand side. So, there are a lot of cars in areas probably where they need a justified area.
I have no comments right now.
I have written up a comment, once we have detailed plans done.
We need a lighting plan. We need a bunch of things, to see what you're gonna do here, you know, and that. You know, show existing landscaping and maybe we need a little bit more landscaping, I don't know yet, till we take over it. So, I mean, you gotta tidy yourself a little bit, so. I mean, I don't think the board has any objection here, right? I mean, you have a business there, you're in an industrial park, you have land to do it and, you know, you seem to be doing well and, but you just gotta buff up these plans a little bit, there's nothing really for us to vote on, so. All right, so you gotta go through the process, so.
Sure thing.
So, get these fixed up, we're here and get in touch with Melissa and she'll schedule it for the next meeting.
All right. Sounds good, thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay. One of the big events tonight, all right? All right, a major subdivision on Black Metal Road. The engineering firm is Peter Zackenfau, it's in the AR3 zoning district. It's a project called Baroda, so. You had cars on the side when I took a ride up there. I don't know if any other board members had a chance to take a ride up there. Larry's saying you should have said. You were parked over here, but you were also parked in the back and that. So, I, I think you have to identify, how much true parking do you need and is this enough parking? Because based on what I saw that day, unless you had an overflow or for some reason, but you had quite a few cars parked there, so I think you have to identify, give us some true parking counts.
True.
We're not asking, you know, for you to, you know, pave the whole damn thing, we don't want that to happen, you know? We'd rather, you have a nice backyard in the back, down in the backyard and stuff like that, but I think you have to give us some honest counts on parking, how many employees you have and so on and so forth, so. All right. Justin, we'll start with you.
No comment at this time.
Charlie, so.
Yeah.
John?
Mark? The warehouse, the crossway that you're currently using, you don't own that, you're just renting, leasing it, and so this is just gonna be for your, your personal use? Or for business use?
We're planning on moving whatever is in across the street into here, not rent.
Not rent at all? All right. Just wondering if you're expanding exponentially here. Yeah, just to echo what Don will say in the parking spots, but.
Jackie?
And just in the back, I mean, update the plans because of the rise there. I don't know if a wall is gonna be warranted from the back coming forward where it is, but I mean, we can't see any of it until all of the, I mean, I was there, it was kinda tight and it's tight coming around the right-hand side. So, there are a lot of cars in areas probably where they need a justified area.
I have no comments right now.
I have written up a comment, once we have detailed plans done.
We need a lighting plan. We need a bunch of things, to see what you're gonna do here, you know, and that. You know, show existing landscaping and maybe we need a little bit more landscaping, I don't know yet, till we take over it. So, I mean, you gotta tidy yourself a little bit, so. I mean, I don't think the board has any objection here, right? I mean, you have a business there, you're in an industrial park, you have land to do it and, you know, you seem to be doing well and, but you just gotta buff up these plans a little bit, there's nothing really for us to vote on, so. All right, so you gotta go through the process, so.
Sure thing.
So, get these fixed up, we're here and get in touch with Melissa and she'll schedule it for the next meeting.
All right. Sounds good, thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay. One of the big events tonight, all right? All right, a major subdivision on Black Metal Road. The engineering firm is Peter Zackenfau, it's in the AR3 zoning district. It's a project called Baroda, so. So, Mr. Fau.
Yes, sir.
I guess the first question I have to ask you is, where have you been for five years? Okay, so that's the first question we're gonna ask.
Oh, well.
We had a public hearing five years ago.
That's right.
There are four board members here that were not part of the board, so you have almost a completely new board here at this point in time and that. The cluster decision was given in 2015, so now that puts us eight years back. So, you know, I, I mean, lot, lot has changed, all right? So, besides new board members, your wetland determinations have all expired.
That's correct.
Your septic tests have expired. Your endangered species have to all be updated. I have no idea if the bob turtles have moved up that hill or what's happened with any of this stuff and that. So, I mean, to send a book in to us here and you're gonna, you'll hear from, this is my opinion, you'll hear from the rest of the board, because the board always makes comments, but, I mean, I, I don't, personally, I have no intentions of looking at your cluster tonight, looking at your book, your answer to the, to five-year-old public comment here. I mean, we all have to read, sit down and go read that book again. We have to, I had to pull all the minutes for the board here and that. I mean, it's just totally unacceptable to come back here after five years. It's like, you know, we skipped school for five years and now we walk in the door and think the board's gonna be, or at least, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but, I mean, I'm not happy about this at all. So, I mean, I don't think that, you know, I did hire a planner, we have a planner here. I'll ask Kristen to make some comments. She did find a few things we could talk about and that, but mainly, I just don't think we're prepared to do anything until we, you have to at least get everything back to present. We have to get everything back to 2023 and that. I don't, I have no idea, wetlands might have got disappeared, they might have got bigger and creeped up the hill. I have no idea what's happening here. And five years is just totally ridiculous.
Well, that's, we're gearing the project back up and that's why we're here. We understand that.
But what, what's the purpose of us, you know, and I'm gonna, again, we're gonna hear from others here, but what's the purpose of us looking at cluster plans tonight? I mean, why should I even look at that? I mean, I mean, you know, we all have to go back and study all this, we have to start from the beginning again, that's what has to happen. It's just unacceptable to come here after eight years and to, and just pop that, pop your head in here, so.
The purpose of coming here tonight is to start up the project again, so however the board feels we do that, that's the purpose I'm here tonight, I'm not asking for an approval this evening, I.
Approval? First of all, you've been doing this for a long time, a real long time.
Sure.
You know your wetland determinations have expired, so why wouldn't you have new one walking in the door? Why, you know your septic system testing is all bogus. That's, not bogus, but it's expired. It's, it's, it's not there. We have no idea about the endangered species, you know, eagles could be resting up in the trees now, I mean, all of that. It's just unacceptable to walk in the door with a set of plans and, and answers to public hearing when you're not even prepared to do that. So, I'll start with Larry down on this end.
I shared the sentiments with you, since it's been so long, you really need to start back from ground zero again. They gave us a new set of plans, but the only thing I've seen that's different is the revision date of 11/11/2022, but I didn't notice anything different on the plans. You know, the environment could have changed, so you'd have to do all your assessments again, you know, the wetlands, as Don had said. But, you know, it's, I'll, you know, I, I questioned the yield plan originally. My rec, to my recollection, houses can't be closer than 100 feet to the edge of the wetlands and no, and no disturbance within 50 feet of the wetlands. I saw a number of lots in that yield plan that are closer than this. I don't believe that 29 lots is realistic, I think it's much less than that. There is a, Mr. Fusco on December 2nd, 2014, wrote a letter to the planning board stating that 67%, 67% of the lots cannot have a septic system due to the soil groups on the property. I don't know how you're gonna do subdivision.
We subsequently did soils testing with Mr. Fusco's office to, to address that particular comment.
I don't think, I don't think the soils changed, but this is a letter from our, the planning board engineer saying that 67% of the lots cannot have a septic system due to the soil groups.
Right.
So, you know, it's, you know, I said, I don't know where you're going with this. The, you know, Lot 29, that looks like a flag lock to me. And the soil looks like it's using, as a driveway, Bear's Lane, which is a town road. So, I don't know how you're gonna deal, deal with that. You know, is it, is it close to subdivision or the surrounding area? All, all those lots are five-plus acres, so it's not fitting into the environment around it. You know, another thing is, you know, one of our guiding documents that the planning board uses is our comprehensive plan. This whole development is contrary to our comprehensive plan. So, you know, I don't know, you know, where you want us to go with this, you know? We have to, you know, follow those guidelines. And so, you know, I see that as a major, major problem. Another thing is, we need impact statements for water and septic. We need a full EAF, I think also environmental impact statement. And maybe get the DEC involved here, you know? In that area of town, we have a problem with water. There's a large development going in across the valley, not, you know, less than a mile away, and giant water issues there. And this development will just compound that, so I think we need an analysis of, you know, availability of water needs to be performed. I think that is an absolute must. You know, as Don already said, you know, the, the hurt tests, all the soil tests were, you know, the six and a half years old are not valid anymore. One point about that is those tests were done in July, when the driest. One point about that is those tests were done in July, when the driest months of the year. Tests should be really performed January to May at the latest, you know, when you have your wettest time of the year to get accurate. Also, those per tests, most of those per tests aren't even applicable because Orange County guidelines for per test is you have to have two consistent results that will, it's less than 30 minutes, it has to be one minute apart, more than 30 minutes, 30 or 60, it has to be two minutes apart. You had a whole bunch of them, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that didn't even meet the standards. So, you know. Another concern is, you know, it's on a hill. You have outlining for four bedrooms. So you have for the septic systems, you have 50%, 50% expansion on the leach fields. But, you know, the septic tanks are only designed for a maximum of four bedrooms. So if you're gonna have an expansion, someone does an addition to the house that requires an expansion of leach field, you also gotta, you know, have a larger sized septic tank. Why not, then I think there should be larger septic tanks right from the get go to accommodate any expansion. Let's see. The. You call for curves. And I know our previous highway department supervisor does not like concrete curbs. The problem with that is after time they crack by, because they're being hit by snow plows during construction, trucks run over them, they crack them. At the very least, you'd have to have rebar in them just to make them stronger and maybe a 4,500 pound mix. But I'm not thrilled with concrete curbs. I think if you're gonna have curbs, the only realistic curb to have that lasted forever are granite curbs. You know, look at Westchester, they have curbs that are over hundreds, have been in place for over a hundred years and last a very long time. So if there are gonna be curbs, I think a realistic way of going for the town's sake is have granite curbs. It appears that there's sidewalks. Now, it looks like there's sidewalks set all around the edge of the road, it looks like there's sidewalks. Are there?
There weren't, they're not proposed, but.
That's one, because if there were, there's no detail to that. The, I noticed a lot of the trees, you have two different, like two different types of trees. I think you need a little more detail. They should make sure they're planted far enough away from the curb so the root stone doesn't cause a problem with curbing. All the road sections don't have, show any DOT specs. So that should be there as well as with the, you know, the curves. For the curbs, it shows an underdrain underneath it, but there's no criteria is, well, do you need the underdrain or not? You know, so there should be criteria there so that determination could be made at the time of it's going to curbs. Also, the same is true with the catch faces. They have drains in the catch faces. But if required, what's the determination for the drains or the catch faces? Some, there has to be detail there for that. The curtain drains lack annotation. The curtain drain for lot 28 empty is out to lot 27. Curtain drain for 25 letting these out to lot 26. And there's like, half of eight, eight lots that, the lots uphill, you know, drain out into the uphill, the, the lower. You know, if you're gonna have curtain drains, they should feed into the catch faces so they don't cause a problem to the lower lots. There are no line of sight for the roadways. On the upper road, we have there, just, just below the crest of, of Black Meadow Road, and people go zipping down that and that could be a potential traffic hazard that one road. Those drive, those road entrances also lacking culverts. You know, there's swales along Black Meadow Road. So, you know, you don't, you don't show any culverts for that. That, that's a problem. I would also suggest that consideration be given to widen the road on the subdivision side to the whole area. Why give it a, you know, three to four foot shoulder on there for safety reasons? Also, as, there should also be a drainage district established for the subdivision, you know, for the maintenance of stormwater basins and the drainage infrastructure. And Mr. Fusco had recommended this in a March 8th, 2018 letter to the planning board, so. You know, we need to make sure that there's funds coming in, that subdivision pays for all that maintenance with that, with that drainage. And one of the last two things, you know, at some point, you know, Don, we're certainly gonna need a public hearing. You know, because a lot of, I think, folks here, they're probably interested in the subdivision. So we're gonna want, you know, a public hearing and, you know, possible information. So those are the comments that I have.
Okay. Don?
I think Larry pretty much covered a lot of the stuff that this project will have to come in as new, basically, with all the paperwork, because everything's changed in those eight years.
Not to be repetitive, but yes, because it's like fresh eyes now and a lot has changed and maybe nothing has changed, but we don't know that. So we need to really kind of get all the details and move forward.
I'll save my comments when you come back for all the homework in your lab.
So actually, you guys are the ones that were not on the board at the time, so, you know, you don't have much of a, you know, experience for the whole project, so. John, any comments?
Joe? Same thing.
Just a question, are we locked into the cluster plan? I know that was approved by the board way back, does that expire ever?
Yeah, so there's a rule of reason. I mean, I hate to be the lawyer that says we need to be reasonable, but we need to be reasonable. And I think the passage of time may, and you've heard of all the things, the wetland delineations, the soils tests, they need to be reestablished, Joe, so we know that the yield plan that you presented is still an accurate yield plan. And if the yield plan's not present, not, doesn't prove out, then you have an issue with the cluster. So I think that that is not binding, in my view, because of the passage of time. Now, if, if they come back and everything proves out, then you have a determination for me. But I don't see how something that long ago was different, tests that now expired, can be deemed valid and binding on the board, in my view.
Okay, thank you. Kristen, you had some comments too.
Yeah, so I didn't get into yield plan versus cluster plan, I will do that for the board in a few days to discuss. But basically, just with the materials that were presented, I will touch on kind of briefly, obviously, the plans need to be updated, that, some of the items that the board touched on. But the visual impact analysis that was provided, obviously, we should probably establish yield plan and nail that down first, but the visual impact assessment that was provided quickly and only gets into existing conditions photos and then provide line of sight diagrams. The line of sight diagrams don't show the proposed house locations. So while it is demonstrating that there is quite a bit of change in photography and investigation between the site and some of the surrounding city roads, you'll see where the proposed line of sight are. Because there's a hill, what is the house on the top of the hill, it's in the middle of the hill. You know, it doesn't really give a foreign matter a lot of context to decide or, or anyone else who's doing the document, a lot of context to decide if they believe that there is or is not a visual impact. It's kind of difficult to understand it. It doesn't actually say there's proposed photography or existing photography. So I would say that there's, it's a good start. With, with seven existing drainage points and existing conditions photos, but I think that there's a step two involved and that's gonna be actually showing what the impacts are. And that's with identifying where the dwelling sites are, identifying the proposed photography. In some, some simulations, I think it all benefit the board. But again, probably don't need to get into a visual analysis until we really nail down what type of subdivision layout we're talking about and whether that yield is supportable before we get into the, we get into analysis of, of the environmental impact related to those units.
Okay.
Thanks, Kristen.
All right, any other final comments by the board or anything like that?
So we need just.
Oh, Mr. Fau, yeah.
It's a minor, a minor thing, but in the visual assessment that they provided, it said that you wouldn't be able to see it from NAP's view. And when I drove by there, I could easily see NAP's view from Baird's Road. So.
All right.
I'll second that.
Maybe not the bottom of that.
Yeah, but. Yeah, but who's hanging out in the parking lot?
Good. All right, so.
Can I ask a question?
Who are you?
My name is Marshall Nymark, I live in the Hudson.
No.
I can ask one question. One question.
No. I, please not, hold your comments. You can write an email. Do you wanna leave? Do you wanna leave or? Please, I said we're not making comments tonight, okay? I get, I get emails from people here all the time, so this is not a public hearing. It's the quorum that we all have to follow. No, you're not. So you don't, you don't get a chance.
So procedurally, how would the board like to?
Well, first of all, you need to update all these.
No, I, I understand, but as far as like, secret.
Then come back in and we'll have another discussion on the yield plan. We'll have a discussion of all this and we can, we're gonna have to go back and see where we are.
Okay, I'm just like procedural with secret, a new long form?
I think that would be appropriate place to start, Joe. A full EAF to start, and then whatever other things are outdated need to be updated.
Okay.
Right?
Sure.
And ju, ju, just to be clear, just to be clear, there'll be a public hearing. And so there's a process by which the board, for those of you who have been here frequently, that the board operates and at the public hearing is the time for public comment to be made, not at a, otherwise it's an open meeting for you to see what the board does, but just comments at the public hearing.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
No.
When do we get answers to questions, five years later?
Bingo. Joe, you, you need to get all these stuff. When you come back in with all your studies updated and that, we'll, we'll take a look at your yield plan. You got to discuss that again and then we're gonna go from there.
Sure. Thanks very much.
All right?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What about the septic system?
Tim, Tim, please.
They're not allowed.
Tim, please.
Why go further, you're wasting every inside. I won't answer that. We need an information meeting before the public hearing.
Tim. Tim, you're a town employee, you should know better.
I am a town employee, you are, and you work for us.
You're a town employee, just the same as I am, Kenny. Tim.
You're a town employee and we're Americans.
All right, the next thing on our agenda tonight is Davidson Drive.
Unbelievable. Mr. Town, will you schedule an information meeting for the public to answer?
Our next thing on our agenda is Davidson Drive, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Frank Filichildo from Creighton Manning for the record. We were last before.
Just hang in till we.
Sure.
Alexa, they're gonna hang in the halls, can you just close the doors when they go out there, please? Thank you, Alexa. Okay, now you can start.
Thank you, good evening once again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Frank Filichildo from Creighton Manning Engineering for the record, joined by Mike Morgante, the project site engineer. I'm introducing it because I believe we can cut to the chase. I think the majority of the comments coming out of the last meeting, we were here in front of you on February 1st, were regarding traffic. I'm the project traffic engineer. So the majority, I think, of the discussion was around traffic. We could start there. If, if the board would like to hear from Mike first, you know, he's more than willing to update, you know, on, on those matters. But we are in receipt of Collier's letter dated today. There were a handful of comments in that letter that we could go through one by one if the board would like. There was also some information that was not available to us by the last submission deadline of February 15th. That was a foil request that we had made to the state DOT. That information came in after February 15th. It was a comment that was in Collier's letter. I can address those comments verbally and then put it in writing after the fact if the board would like. So we could, we could take it however you'd like. If you wanna go through Collier's letter or, or I could just, you know, explain what it's in the letter and then go through it. Happy to do it however the board wishes.
Well, you got the four right now.
Okay.
So you take the four right now.
Sure.
Rich is here to talk about his, his comments and reports and stuff like that, so.
Sure.
All right.
So I'll start at what I think is the, the most substantive matter at hand, which was the turning radii at Lake Station Road and Belleville Road. Heard a lot of discussion and concern about that at the last meeting. We prepared conceptual plans to show how the turning radii at that intersection could be enlarged to accommodate trucks turning from Belleville Road onto Lake Station Road, making that right turn. That right turn is really what's driving the need to do that. There's not as much of a need to accommodate a left turn in that respect because a left turn has a, has a wider sweep and there's more pavement from which to accommodate that left turn. So it's really the right turn coming onto Lake Station Road from Belleville Road. We, we put together some conceptual plans to show how the road could be widened in that, in that location. The one thing that we need to do is confirm the right of way boundaries there. Make sure that there is adequate land on either side of Lake Station Road in which, on which to widen, public land. The road, the, the, the legal area of the road is typically wider than the pavement limits. And so we've commissioned our surveyor to go out there and establish those right of way boundaries, at which point we'd be prepared to solidify that conceptual plan into a more substantial plan to show the widening. What that all means is that the truck would be able to make a more smooth turn from southbound Belleville Road onto Lake Station Road and not come into contact with a, a driver at the stop line on Lake Station Road looking to turn onto Belleville Road. For the record, however, this, this is a condition that does exist today. We are industrial use, so we will be introducing more truck traffic and we understand the concerns and that's why we're willing to, to address the matter. But it is an existing condition today. We did document in our traffic study that there are heavy vehicles using the roadway and that this is not a situation that we're creating necessarily, but it is one that we are adding a little bit to and we're willing to address through, through engineering design. So, so that was really the, the main, I would say, the large comment that, that gives us a little bit more homework to do. I think, you know, if the board is willing to tonight, you know, if, if, if you're in a position to decide, we could certainly, you know, condition that and, and show you, you know, prove to the town after we get the right of way boundaries that it's, that it's feasible and how it would be carried out. Relative to some of the other comments in the letter, there are a few cleanup items that we just need to address. One was related to site distance, CAD file. CAD files need to just be rejiggered a little bit to show the sight lines accurately from the proposed driveway. They got a little bit, they weren't shown accurately when we, when we submitted. So we'll, we'll clean that up. We'll also prepare a plan that shows installation of stop lines, double yellow lines on Lake Station Road. One of the things we'll have to do is once we know the right of way boundaries at Lake Station and Belleville, we'll know where the, the striping needs to be based on widening limits. In terms of M E T C, M E T C D signage required for the exiting right turn movement for trucks leaving the site, no problem, we'll get that on the plan. There was also discussion, it, it wasn't originally in Collier's comments, but there was discussion about the impact of truck traffic on the 17M 94 intersection, closer to the heart of, part of the town, village rather, and how that, and how that would, would be exacerbated or not exacerbated by the project. So based on the traffic study that we've done, which was based on industry standards, I T E data, the peak hour number of truck trips is two. One entering, one exiting truck trip. One entering, one exiting. So we believe the impact on any intersection that far away from the site will be de minimis. At most, one truck in the worst case peak hour would be added to that intersection in either direction. There was specific concerns about, I think, the left turn bay by McDonald's. So if you were making that left turn and then get back on 17 to go west, understanding the limitations of that left turn lane, again, it would be one peak hour truck, worst case scenario. We didn't explicitly say that in our commentary. We can certainly do that, no problem. That, though, would be completely eliminated if the truck takes the route through Leoni Drive, through the industrial area, because you bypass that whole part of Chester. We did not ta- we did not, in our analysis, in our most recent analysis, we kept all the truck traffic that we had, that we had previously showed going up to 17M and, and King's Highway. But we do recognize that if they elect to go through the industrial park there, that they would no longer be hitting those intersections. But again, what it boils down to is at most two, two truck trips during the peak hour. So it's a fairly minimal footprint of truck traffic that's hitting those intersections that far away from the subject site. In addition, just going through here. Collier's also requested to see our synchro files. Those are the, the computer software analyses that actually generate the results. We will make those files available to Collier's so they can review and confirm, confirm the results. We'll do that after this meeting. And then finally, the crash evaluation, intersection crash evaluation that was requested, we submitted a foil request to DOT right after we received the comments. That foil request kind of lagged and we didn't get the data until after the 15th. So I can provide the board with a rundown of the crash history at some of the locations. And then we could back it up, you know, with a written response after the fact if, if the board would like. Just to give the board some, some interse- some information on that, what we did was we requested the last six years of data, 2017 through 2022. The reason, typically, industry standards is to look at the last three years of data. However, we had something known as COVID in that last three year period. So what we've done is we've gone farther back because COVID took a lot of people off the road in 2020 and 2021 and things were not necessarily the, the typical. So we went all the way back to 2017. I was happy to see that there were no fatalities at the, at the, at the study intersections. And there were relatively a low incidence of crashes that resulted in injury. That's how the state categorizes them, is injury, non-injury, fatality. In terms of sheer numbers, for example, at Belleville Road and Lake Station Road, there, there have been seven reported accidents since 2017 at that intersection. The majority of those accidents were in 2017 and 2018. And then there was one each year until 2022. At the intersection of King's Highway and Belleville Road, there have been three accidents since 2017. And that's the intersection that we've had. I know, Mr. Chairman, you've been concerned about site distance at that particular intersection. At King's Highway and La Row, which was an intersection that we added recently as a result of Collier's comments, there have been 15 accidents at that intersection. And that's a signalized intersection. So the types of accidents that you see there are going to be a little bit, a little bit different than you would at an unsignalized intersection. King's Highway and, and, I'm sorry, and, and Lehigh and 17M, the big intersection, kind of the, the two for one up there, 22 accidents since 2017. So obviously, more traffic generally would create the opportunity for more crashes. That's usually how it bears out. But the intersections closest to the site, which is where the traffic concentrates the most, those two intersections on either side of Lake Station Road, seven in the last six years at Lake Station and Belleville and three at Lake Station and, I'm sorry, at, at Lake Station and King's Highway. So we'll put this in a, in a, in a follow-up. But I just wanted to get that on the record tonight, that we did get the information. We didn't have enough time to submit, obviously, for the 15th. And that we are doing things with Orange County on King's Highway to improve the intersection visibility through signage. We did reach out to them regarding that warning sign going up towards the Wickham Village flashing yellow. We brought that to their attention. There's some correspondence in our resubmission that Collier's has reviewed and the county was receptive to those recommendations. So I think that's generally, in a big, big nutshell, what, what we've gotten from the most recent letter and what we've done over the past month. With the big takeaway being that we are, we will be coming, you know, to the town in some fashion with a set of plans that shows the widening limits for Belleville and Lake Station to accommodate those trucks.
For Rich goes up. The accidents, are those trucks, cars, or anything in between? In other words, they're not all truck related accidents?
Not all truck related. The thing with the foil request, when you make a foil request for, for crash data, you get basically the date of the accident, you get the contributing factors, you get the directions of the vehicles. You don't necessarily get the vehicle type. In order to do that, you'd have to file a, a subsequent foil to get the actual MV 104 report that the police officer wrote, redacted, of course, because you can't get the personal information. And then you'd have to see the type of vehicle driving. So it would require going a few more layers of the onion deeper. But, you know, at, at an intersection like Belleville and Lake Station with seven accidents over the last six years, you're looking at, you know, one a year on average, which isn't indicative of a, of a, of a problem per se.
Okay. Rich, you want to tell us?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Rich Dandrea, Collier's Engineering and Design. So we, we went through the resubmission of the traffic study and their response letter and the site plans. For the most part, they addressed the majority of our comments from our initial comment letter. There, I think Frank did a good job of hitting on the majority of things that were in our most recent review letter. I think the, the big thing that Frank did mention was about the truck turning analysis at Belleville and Lake Station Road. I do want to point out that we did receive a, a video that was sent to us of a resident, I guess, who drove a truck through that intersection and, and up towards the site on Lake Station Road. We did review that as well. And we understand that under the existing conditions, there may be some difficulties making those turns. And that was the genesis of our original comments about, about Lake Station Belleville intersection and the site access. Looking at what they're now proposing for widening at Lake Station and Belleville, we do think that that would accommodate those truck turn movements, the right turn truck from Lake Station Road onto Belleville Road. I'm sorry, the, on, from Belleville onto Lake Station, without the need to make a wide turn or cross the W L line to get in there. The, the, the site access intersection was all, is, is also looked at in their truck turning analysis. They didn't really make any modifications there, but I do, you know, their, their comment is that based on the amount of truck traffic that they're anticipating, one in and one out in the, in, in an hour period, you're not really going to have a lot of conflicts between trucks and other, and other vehicles going in and out of that driveway. It does show that with the radii that they're proposing, that you can make that right turn in, which is the more critical of the turns, without having to cross the double yellow line again on, on Lake Station Road to get into the site. So at the end of the day, I think, you know, those intersections with the improvements that they're proposing will accommodate the trucks. The other thing I should mention is that they are, if you're not aware, they're, they are proposing to widen or provide some additional pavement width on the shoulder for, I think, about 150 feet from the site access east towards, towards Belleville there. So that'll also help with those turning movements as well. So, you know, like I said, they, they did address the majority of the R R comments. The, the concern about 17M at 94 that was brought up last, last time. The, they are going to add additional traffic there, right? It's not going to be all of their traffic. And as Frank mentioned, you know, one truck in and one truck out in, in a, in an hour is likely not going to have a significant impact at that location. The other thing that, that Frank mentioned, that is, that there is an alternate route that a truck may use to go through the industrial park to get over to the exit 126. The other thing, the, the third thing is, you know, that's for a truck going to the west locally. If the truck's going to the east, they're likely going to use exit 127 from 17M that way or from Lehigh Avenue if they're coming to the site. So you're not really going to go through necessarily the 17M 94 intersection. Other than that, I think, you know, we had the comment on the, on the site distance, which I, I don't think is, is really just a drafting item that needs to be corrected on the plans and just making sure that we get, we do get the appropriate site distance coming out of that driveway. The, the, the striping items and the, and the widening, I think we, we talked about. And the other thing that Frank talked about, about the accidents, I, I obviously I haven't seen that information. But from what he did mention tonight, it doesn't sound like there's any significant accident history that in immediate vicinity of the site that we really need to be concerned about. But we can, we can take a look at that when we're provided that information.
Any comments from the board to our traffic?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think it's great that, you know, certainly the intersection of Lake Station Road and Belleville is greatly improved, you know, for those trucks, literally, but, you know, trailers coming in and out. However, you know, we're adding commercial traffic to, which is really a residential road. It's only 24 feet wide at best. You know, what's the current standard for the town of Chester? That would have to be a 30 foot wide road, to be for commercial traffic. There are houses that live along Lake Station Road between Belleville and Paradise. You know, with that traffic, I'm concerned about it being only 24 feet wide. I would like to see it made 30. So there's at least a bit of a shoulder. With respect to, this is only one project of three others, you know, that we, you know, there's two others that are being implemented that are going to add truck traffic. So while this may be, may be only one truck per hour, we don't know that. That's just speculation. You know, if they, they claim right now that it's only one shift, which I really find hard to believe. You spend all your money and only have one shift. You don't make that kind of investment and only use it eight or 10 hours a day. But, so if that's the case, I see a lot more than one truck per hour. I, you know, one in, one out per hour, maybe that's two trucks. They're going to have to go up probably to 17 to go out to the highway. On a daily basis today, that King's Highway backs up almost to the intersection of La Row and, and King's Highway now. Tractor trailer, 53 bit long that moves slow is really going to cause a bomb. All it takes is three cars at the traffic line and there's no room to turn right. So we're talking about, you know, additional trucks. That would make that worse in the morning or certainly at night. I could just imagine what it's going to look like, that trap, that intersection, besides the two other businesses that are warehouses that are being built. So I understand everything he said. Great, great response, but I'm, I'm a little leery on it. You know, it's, I believe that we need to make sure we have the necessary infrastructure to support that even roads. So far, I haven't heard enough to make me satisfied with that. That's all I'm saying.
Mr.?
I think they've addressed as much as they can with the traffic and we, they can't guarantee that they'll be under one truck. So I think they're doing their due diligence and addressing what they can with the traffic.
I think that widening that is a very good start and that they're showing that the entrance as well, there's enough turning radius because I, when I'm there, I can't imagine that that turn coming out of that entrance is going to give that driver enough girth to come around. And like we saw tonight, L K came back, they've been there four years and their business has grown. So what's to say that four years from now that this business isn't and then we're going to add that many more trucks? Like, on the same way, like, I want to see growth, but it's got to be controlled and justified. So, but those two turns really, really concern me.
Mark?
Mike, there's nothing against your instruction. I think the building's fantastic. I think the renderings are awesome. Again, from the get-go, I've been very consistent with the whole traffic. I echo what Larry was saying. The road is that small for a reason. It's a residential road. It was meant for big trucks like this. So even widening it, who, who does that rely on? When you construct that, like, now, has that become a town problem?
No.
So it becomes a.
Now we'd have to maintain it if it would be their problem.
But they would build it.
They would have to.
And then there would be some sort of lease on that for.
Well, if you're making improvements to an existing town road, it would be dedicated to the town if you call it a town road.
So after that, now all the, any type of improvements or reconstruction, repaving, how it becomes town problem?
Like every other town.
Like every other town. They'd be responsible for the initial.
The initial.
Yeah. John?
Everything's been addressed that I've had in my mind?
I was going to speak on the with, but that's already been addressed.
Okay, so you need to tidy up your documents. Well, we're not done yet. You, you, Michael, you'll come up next. Yeah, in a sec. Well, you want to talk on traffic or?
Well, I'm not necessarily traffic, but what I, what I just would like to note is that, understanding that the board's asking for the width of the road to be increased, we did show that shoulder. That shoulder is at least six feet wide and it's going for at least 150 feet. So the only place where we have insufficient potential road width is for that shoulder that we're showing to be created and for the turn from Belleville onto Lakes Road. So we are providing essentially what the required width would be for Lake Station, those locations between Belleville and our entrance. The truck turning diagrams don't lie. They show that what we're proposing would adequately get trucks in and out of that site without any encroachment over the double yellow line. without any encroachment over the double yellow line. So essentially what we are providing the town is that road widening in those strategic locations to address the traffic concern, which is what we had thought was the main concern for us to provide. On a similar yet separate note, we're, I'm going to switch gears here. We're also, as the board's probably well aware with most of their projects, we're in a position also where if this project's going to move forward and we want to construct this, we have a deadline to cut trees. Our deadline's April 1st. That's not to be encumbered on this board, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention it. We feel that we're pretty close to the finish line. We have no, no issues in continuing to work with this board and the public. The public, by the way, has given us very, very good comments, which we've taken seriously and have tried our best to address with this board. But so timing is not an issue for us in terms of tightening up, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's, but it certainly is an issue for us as it relates to Indiana Bat timeframes and cutting trees. Any approval this board would give after the April 1st deadline would cause the applicant to wait until November 1st. This is the burden of the applicant. It is not the burden of the board and I want to restate that. However, if there's a way for the board to consider that, and I understand that during Seeker, we're not permitted to do any work on the property. I fully understand that. I don't know if there's a conditioned neg deck or anything the board can do to work with us. We have no problem working with the board, extending the timeline to deal with these traffic considerations, but it is going to put, is going to put the applicant under some serious financial constraint to hold on for our property for six months and not be able to work on it. I'd be remiss again if I didn't just say that, so.
Please, please, all right? Not a public hearing.
Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, so, I mean, every property owner that's developing a piece of property confronts the issue if there's an Indiana Bat where there's a limited period of time where trees can be cleared. This property is no different from a bunch of others. I've been involved in other situations where before a approval has been granted, there's been permission to felled trees, there's been some requirements regarding those trees where for store water purposes, you don't, you don't take the stumps out, you cut the trees at a certain level. I tell you though, Mike, I've never been involved where there hasn't been a negative declaration. We haven't finished that Seeker. It's not something I could recommend to the board.
Understood, yeah. If the board could act to just allow tree cutting to occur, that would be sufficient. We don't need anything else. We will continue to work with this board as long as it takes to satisfy the board and the public with traffic concerns. We'll do the best we can. I think we've demonstrated that already.
I mean, it's a board determination or a safeguard you can put in. Again, it's not something that, I mean, I'm just a lawyer, but that's something I would recommend. Typically, before you allow some sort of work to be done on the site, you close out Seeker. You finish, if there's a type one with a positive deck, a finding statement or issue a negative declaration. We're not there yet, so it's not something that I would recommend to the board, Mike, I have to say.
Understood. And the only reason I wouldn't, I am making the request for a consideration simply because we've heard from both traffic consultants on both sides, it seems like we have a solution here. It may take some more time, but it appears there's a solution in sight and we're pretty close to it. So that's my concluding statement on that.
Kristen, would you like to make any comments on it?
On tree clearing? I think, I mean, I agree with Dave. I've been part of plenty of projects where it's worth allow trees to clear ahead of time before that kind of issue. But typically after Seeker's completed or some of the clearing grading plan with clear limits and a number of planned out sort of sessions or conditions are put in place and a bond and things like that. So I don't think your position, I mean, if that's the direction that this board wants to go in, I'm not sure that you're in a position to make that information tonight. Really don't have, you know, that list of positions and same cards in place.
Does somebody want to make a motion to allow them to, without a neg deck, to start tree clearing? So I think that's the answer.
Understood. I only, I had to ask. Not to put the board in a bad position or coerce you, but I just had to ask.
Okay. So also you and I talked today quickly in that, based on advice from my good counsel, okay? We're getting a lot of, you know, this business of not being able to exit out onto Davidson Drive and go out onto Belleville, okay? We know that's what everybody on Lake Station Road would like to happen. So you have stated that you've tried to negotiate that. Again, I'll say that in the past, these were two different pieces of property. You can go to the tax, go to Orange County Tax Records, you can see if you're yourself what I'm saying. I'm not making this up here, all right? You go to Orange County Tax Records, you'll see that this property, both properties have been sold. There were two separate properties, both have been sold multiple times, all right, to different owners. And now we have the final owners. That's where we're at now. Could be sold again, even those and that. But so there were two separate parcels in that. So this is what he talks about, that Pomegranate, which was the one we already approved that is sitting on that piece that was already partially finished, the Davidson Drive out onto Belleville, has gotten approval from this board in that. Now, Mike, you've said that you've approached them, actually told me today twice.
Twice.
So Dave, what we talked about.
Well, I think, and again, I like to say I'm only a lawyer, but I think the engineers, traffic consultants, I think, and not only the neighbors, but everyone would agree, right, it would be cheaper and easier for you to go out the other way.
We would, we never took an exception to that from the beginning. It's just unfortunately we couldn't get that neighbor to work.
So I had discussed with the chairman some sort of documentary evidence that...
Sure.
And even if, you know, you could send a letter to Pomegranate and copy the planning board, detail your discussions with them, just so the planning board and all the consultants have done their due diligence for everyone concerned, because I get the sense that it would be a better project if the traffic went the other way.
I'm not even going to disagree with that statement.
So, you know, whatever you can do to try to make that happen or and demonstrate to the board, so the board has done its due diligence to try to make the best project that they have, I think would be helpful to the board, right?
We take no exception. We can, we can do our best to contact them and try to obtain some correspondence and include the town in that correspondence so that you can also see what, you know, what our dealings have been.
That would definitely be the better solution. I think the entire board says that.
Even your applicant says that, but we don't have a choice unfortunately. So but we'll try one more time. We'll make a concerted effort to contact them to provide the board with something in writing and we'll go from there.
Okay. So any other thing for us tonight or then we'll turn over to the board to ask any final questions?
Yeah, I think...
Kristen has a wonderful report.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Kristen, I sometimes, Kristen's so quiet. You wrote a...
No worries.
Report for this.
No, I mean, yeah, we can revise the plans consistent with all of the plan comments that I had. So I don't have any other technical plan issues. I just touched briefly on Seeker status, but really traffic is kind of outstanding at the moment.
Well, let me start again. Justin, anything you want to?
Yeah. It's already been stated, but I just think that the road should be widened the whole way. I mean, I understand they're widening the intersection and then putting a shoulder where there would be turning into the project, but, you know, there's still the whole street they got to drive down and potentially, you know, crisscross each other a bit. I mean, I drive on that road. It's not super wide.
John.
Everything's been said that I have.
Mark, no further comment.
Mike, in the previous sessions, I'd asked you to add signage. There's no signage on your site plan. So please add signage and also the detail of that, including no jake break signs, you know, both coming in and going out. You know, the jake breaks make a lot of noise.
Yes, we can do that. Yep.
And so if you please add, you know, signage on there and details with that signage. Also the details for the lighting that showed shielding, because that's, that's, the lights they show don't show shielding. So I went on the website for them and, you know, they have that there. So the detail need to show lights with shielding. And there's different types of shielding based on what direction you're going. So you need to specify what type it is.
Sure.
Also take note, I just thought that exit 127 was mentioned earlier. Because my understanding that the D O T is seriously considering closing down 127. That being the case, that puts a lot of, that makes a big difference in the central part of, you know, the village. So, you know, that means, none of the studies either have reflected that. I don't know where the D O T is on that, but they've been talking about them several years. But, you know, if that's, if that's shut down, that'll make, that'll make it difficult. Now, one last thing is, I need to come up on this, but shifts. You're saying you only can have one shift. So are you willing to commit to saying, right, we're only going to allow one shift? If you build more shifts, you get to come back to us?
So, two things. I want to defer to Frank, number one, on exit 127 question. And I believe the shifts had something to do with the traffic also. So I want to leave it to him to answer those two questions because we revised our shifts based on traffic situations, okay?
Okay, so really quickly on the shifts, the E A F was done way before we started getting granular with the traffic study. When we went to update the traffic study, we spoke with our client. He told us 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, 45 employees, one shift. And that's what the study is based on.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but my question is not what you just stated. It's, are they willing to admit they're only going to run one shift? And if they, if they decide to change that, are they willing to come back to the planning board then if they want to add more shifts? Because that's going to have an impact.
We will, we will confirm it.
We'll confirm it.
Yeah.
We'll put ours on operation. No, I understand that. You've already done that. But, you know, right now I'm thinking years ahead, right? And that's what we have to do. And if you're saying, all right, we can't make decisions just on today, we have to think about the future. So my point is, you know, are you willing to commit that? Yes, I'm only have one shift. If I want to add a second or a third shift, you have to come back to us for approval. I mean, Dave, I don't know if we can do that or not, but, you know, you're making statements saying you only do one shift.
So if that's what the plan says and that's what the studies are based upon, we can impose that as a condition that if you're going to change that, you need to come back.
Okay, I'm just confused. How can I have more? How can I have more than one shift from 8 to 16?
He's not talking about that. He's saying, Larry's saying, you're running from 8 to 12.
Then you're going to go 6 to 2:00 in the morning.
Or you're going to go 24 hours a day.
Currently, which would be indicative of, right.
Correct. A lot of warehouses.
Not arguing that. Arguing the point that what Larry's saying is, if you go to a 24 by 7, all of a sudden, two years now, you go to 24 by 7, that becomes a whole new bag. All the studies, everything we've done here, noise studies, that's what he wants on the plan. Just wants a note on the plan saying that if, if you move from an 8 to 6 shift, you need to come back to the planning board. Now, I mean, if you go to 8, 8 may have no effect, but, you know, double shift, triple shifts, you know, 24 by 7s and that, to that big of a thing.
Sure. Sure. Regarding, regarding the, your question about the interchange, I think you, what you were saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is there's this study out, it's called the Pell Study. And what they've identified is a number of interchanges along 17 in this area, either for closure, upgrade, enhancements of some kind. My understanding of the Pell Study, and it's still in its infancy, there's no money committed, to my knowledge, to do any of these improvements. There's no timetable for them. But my understanding of it is that if they were to close, I believe 127 is one of the interchanges that would be closed. However, 128 at Craigville Road would be made a full four-leaf clover as part of that. So yes, you would lose 127, but you would gain a more proper clover leaf at 128. That's my understanding of the Pell when it was first going through during COVID. There were a bunch of information meetings. I've honestly, I have not followed it as of late, but that was my understanding at the time.
Thank you.
It's one of my favorite topics, right, Mike? Because I spoke to the engineers on the Pell Study and that there is no money allocated. We don't know what Hoco's going to do. We don't know if Hoco's going to put three lanes in. So, I mean, this is still, the engineers said that there were no, the two traffic, or whatever they were, engineers that did the study, said there were no money allocated. There's no secret done. I mean, 128 down there is a bunch of wetlands down there. Good luck when you, if they're going to make a full interchange there, you got some tough, tough situation down in there if they're going to do that. Because that is my favorite Amazon warehouse down on Craigville Road that I love down in there.
All right, any other comments or questions?
All right, so I think you got to update your traffic studies, update the plans. Do you understand what he's talking about on that? I mean, it's a simple comment to be made on the plan. Just, we're not questioning the 8 to 6. Yeah, just if we're going to go to a double shift or 24 by 7, board wants you to come back. I think the whole board would do this, so, all right? Okay, we'll see you when you want.
All right.
Rich?
No, he just moved.
We have to see when we're going to get our survey back. So I don't know if I can commit at this time of year, if we're able to...
Melissa's?
Yeah, Melissa's here, so just let Melissa know.
Yep.
We'll get your schedule, all right? Okay. All right, thanks. Thanks. Thanks, Rich, for talking.
I know, that's...
What, you're going to run out on this now?
So, nothing that would turn... Okay.
127 is like the best exit we had. It's the one that actually makes sense. It's got lights, it's big. That's what I thought, you know?
The one I think every day, every day and sometimes three times a day.
Oh, so they want to go to Rehigh?
It's crazy. Because so many people, everybody in the village, like down Main Street, get off that road and go that way. They're not going to go like this. I don't think so. It'd take them twice as long to get right or wrong.
They don't make up for it. I guess it's not up to us.
Mr. Fuller, just wait a second till we clear people out, all right?
I don't want to get rid of 127. I take that every single day.
The plane that's stayed, yeah. We're not asking them to close it.
I'm going to go to their meeting.
What they're banking that on is that 128 would get... Well, you're just down Streetville, but to 128, if they fix 128, 128 is opposite road or Craigville Road. So you just go down three more miles. If you're heading to the thruway or Jersey, you're actually heading the right way and you're just going to get on there. Because right now you have no other choice. You have to go all the way down to the Zin Village Road.
So you get off and go over, over to 17.
Oh, did he? Okay.
What you can do right now.
What?
Can't you get off there and go over to 17?
Get off there, but that's only a one, it's a one-way out. That's all it is.
You can get off, but not... But I should take that now, but I...
But they're going to make that a four-way interchange in that sort of, you can come from... So you can come from Chester, get on, or get off, you know, and so forth. You can't come from the west, the east, and then get off at Craigville Road.
It's 17. What is that, a state road?
It's a state road.
Okay, so we have no say on that anymore.
No.
But that's going to create an issue like that.
Mr. Becker, I got to ask you to, Mr. Becker. Mr. Lynch, good night. Thanks, guys. Mr. Fuller. All right, the last thing on our agenda tonight is Trade Trans Corp. Let me just get your plan up here quick. Bring up the plan, I guess, or what do you want me to bring up?
Yeah, just bring up the site plan, if you would.
I, did, wait, I, did I load? This is the one that didn't have loaded?
That's, that's actually.
Lighting plan.
Yeah, it's a lighting plan from an outside consultant that we engaged.
For some reason, I got, let me get your site plan up, so hang on just a second. Give me one more second. There was a little confusion on this one, yeah, so.
It should be dated 216.
Yeah.
That's the, and then there's one from 920, 122.
Trade Trans site plan, right here. Okay, now I just got to save this. Okay.
Okay, yeah, that page is the existing conditions or the existing site as it is. The next page is the proposed.
Is that mic working?
Uh, is it working? I just have to, yeah. I'm not sure how to adjust it, but I'll just lean forward a little bit.
Okay. We want you to get tired, and then we'll leave you. That's the.
That's okay. So we were last before you in January. We've been here a couple of times as it relates to the proposed site plan. What we're intending on doing here is a 24,000 square foot addition to the west of the existing building complex. Create what essentially is, we represented a kind of a U-shaped orientation of the building. I know there was a number of comments from Mr. Fusco's last review letter, which we attempted to address in full and resubmitted, for discussion here this evening and hopefully to move this project forward. So, I don't know if you want to walk through his comments and we can discuss how we address them, or.
Okay, he did, Al, you did send some new ones out too, right? Which, and he said he'd address them. Let me bring his out.
Real quick. He didn't submit, he didn't submit for the work for the year yet, in charge of reviews and stuff. Parking now meets the recorded spaces, you know, married required. The swippy did give me, I'm halfway through it. I'm still reviewing it. I'll give him the comments, secondly, if that's okay with you, Wood. Waiting for a couple permits, the buffer disturbance and the individual wetland disturbance permit. We did get a ship out, no further action by us. We did soil tests, which was adequate. We did a very extensive lighting plan, appears to be acceptable. Landscape should be, you know, reviewed by the board, and they find it acceptable. They did have a note regarding floodplain development, which was fine, and also endangered species and clearing restrictions that are required, you know, for the ecological control. So, and the board's comments, that's pretty much it.
Okay. What comments you done, or?
No, I prepared to answer any questions and, you know, if we are in a position that.
Why don't you go over the lighting plan? Like Al said, he did do an extensive lighting plan. So why don't we just cover that quick while we have it?
Yeah, actually, what I've done, and I've done this on a lot of projects, is RAB is a leading manufacturer of lighting, very common in the industry. They have independent designers that will take our site plan with the municipal requirements for lighting and create a lighting plan. And so that's what we did, is we engaged them to create a light plan. Now, obviously, the benefit to them is that we buy their product, but the lighting design that you show there, all that's in foot candles. Within the site plan, I also created what I'll call propagation or contours for the lighting to make sure that we're in compliance, you know, with the ordinance for the town, so. And so what that indicates is just what, with the proposed lighting that we've indicated, again, which is based on their design, that at each point, as it propagates out from the building and any other freestanding lights that we have, that it meets the requirements of the ordinance as well as industry standard for lighting around parking lots of this nature.
Larry?
Okay. We didn't address the lights that are on the side of the building. The building, I wonder if you changed those lights three or four years ago, bright LED, you changed all the lights, the bright LED shining straight out. It was like lighting up a football stadium. So you need to make sure you address these lights as well, replace them with, like, a horn. Don, if you please shift back to where they show the detail, the lights. Keep going down, there's a couple more pages.
More?
Shift over. If you go down to, it's, it's the next page. All right. No shielding on here. You need to have shielding on here. These are broadcast lights. So they're not just shining, they just don't shine down, they shine out. So this manufacturer, I looked it up, they do offer these lights with shielding.
Okay.
So if you please add that on there, that would.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Don, are you coming for the lighting plan? Jackie on the lighting plan? Anybody else on the lighting plan? Any questions, comments? All right, so what about, all right, so the landscaping plan? Did anyone have a chance to take over that yet, or?
So my email was compromised, so I didn't. So I just got back into it today. So, I mean, the landscape now is very clean and concise, so, and they take very good care of it, so that's.
So we can take a look at that?
We can, yeah.
Any other comments, questions? So what he'd like us to do is vote, put them on a public hearing on the 5th, okay? Are they ready to go? Appears that, in my opinion, they are, but. So somebody want to make a motion to put them on the public hearing on the 5th? Motion by Justin, second by John. All in favor?
All right.
All right, so, all right, so public hearing will be on the 5th.
Okay.
You need to get, it's not your first go, Ryan. You need to get in touch with Melissa. Remember, it's a 10-day rule here. So do it right away, you know? If you have 20 days in advance, you're federal, 10 days or anything like that, so. All right, and Melissa will create the list for you. She'll have that done shortly. You just get in touch with her, and she'll tell you when it's ready and stuff.
Okay, very good.
Any other comments or questions to John? Okay.
All right.
We'll see you on the 5th.
Very good, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, huh?
I'll be in touch.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, so, someone want to make a motion to close? Any other questions, comments, anything? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Of course, everyone, thanks. Tonight wasn't too bad tonight.